Welcome all to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this Wednesday, August 28, 2019. We opened at 7:00 PM here in the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We will call the cases. We'll give the public a chance to comment at the relevant times. And we'll start by, oh, we are being video recorded. I need to tell you that. And then it will be posted in a day or so up on the YouTube Channel 18 website. I'll have the board of members introduce themselves, please.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
Mike Capoli.
And Shayla Delaney and I realize I forgot my stuff. I'm the Secretary.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you could call our first case, please.
The first case, however, is 2019-27. And we have received a notice from Robert Lothrup requesting a conditional continuance for the Board of Appeals hearing that was scheduled for August 28, 2019, to the September 26, 2019 hearing.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. This says 26th.
Okay, but the hearing is on the 25th?
It's on the 25th, okay. The 25th. Due to the fact that my neighbor Kathy Holdren is unavailable to make the August hearing. Thank you very much for your time on this matter, Robert Lothrup.
Okay, this is the neighbor, you know, this is the retaining wall. And I believe this is the neighbor on the downside of the wall. So I think we do want to let her have a chance to come in. And we also need his site plan, plot plan, that's why we sent him back.
Which we don't have.
Right. We still don't have that, so. And if he doesn't get it next time, we will move to dismiss the case.
You need a vote?
Yeah, we need a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Donahue, any discussion by the board? And the motion would be to continue this case to 7:00 PM on September 25, 2019. That way we'll have it as our first case. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. So that will be our first case next month.
Okay. The case, the final case and only case for tonight is Case 2019-31. Robert West, through his agent, Joseph Hunnigan, has applied for special permit to demolish and replace a portion of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich 325-54 and 325 Table 2, Area Regulation and Section 325, Table 3. Height and bulk regulations are set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 632 Route 28, MAP 15, Partial P10, in the R1 zoning district. We do have one comment from the town. It appears it came from the senior health agent for the town, Katie Tangila. And she writes, "I have reviewed the application for the special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the subject located at 632 Route 28. The septic system was installed in 2018 and was designed for four bedrooms. The proposed floor plan shows four bedrooms in this house. The proposed plan shows no setback issues to the septic system. The Health Department has no concerns as this plan is shown. The detached structure is listed as a garage and cannot be as habitable." It's a detached garage, rather. Cannot be used as habitable space. And should you require further information, this is read into the record.
If the applicant could come forward, please, to the table and...
My name is Joseph Hannigan.
If you could come up to the table, please, sir.
Right here.
Right here to the table with the mic there, thanks.
Sure, I'm Joe Hannigan. I'm the agent for Robert and Allison West, who is with me tonight. This application is for 632 Route 28, as mentioned. We have proposed to remove and replace a building section. And with that, we've had to consider Article 6, Section 325-54, particularly Chapter 5, the five items, Items A through E. We meet all that criteria. Section 325-54, 5A, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Chapter 5B, the project does not create any undue hazard or nuisance. Section 325-54, Chapter 5C, will not increase any nonconformity. And D will reduce the site area coverage, the overall site area coverage. And Chapter 5E, it will not increase the structure by 25%. We believe we meet Article 5, Section 325-15 and 325-18C. The owners purchased this about a month ago. And during that home inspection, it was revealed that there was some significant undermining of the foundation. The owners particularly love the house. It's just shy of 100 years old. They want to keep the character of the house. At the same time, they want to bring it up to standards and address the issues of the foundation, some of the supporting beams that have been shown to be deflecting. On discussions with them, we determined that it would be best to leave the existing structure that is the front, where most of the character is. On the back of the house, we propose to remove that section, put a full new foundation in, new carrying structures, and then build off that and tie it back into the existing house. At the same time, make renovations to that, the 100-year-old existing part by putting in new windows, replacing the rotting trim, and bringing it up to today's code and standards.
Okay, maybe if you could just talk us through the plan, what's actually happening back there? Are you expanding some of the rooms or...?
So currently, because it's 100 years old, the part that's going to remain, the only thing we're doing there is extending a wall over. The rest of the structure is going to stay as it is. We're just going to replace the windows and the rot and change some of the trim to AZEC. On the exist, on the part that we're demolishing, because it's 100 years old, there's a lot of little cut-up rooms and it just doesn't flow. So we're going to redesign that whole area. Make it, right now, it's a kitchen, a laundry room, a bathroom. It's got a scuttle hole to a crawl space in the floor. All that will go away. And it'll just be a kitchen and a family room. The bedroom upstairs will remain a bedroom. There's a chimney, an old chimney that's not even being used. That comes up through the center of the bathroom. I don't know how that was born or where that came from, but it's directly in the middle of the bathroom. And it's not being used and won't be used in the future, so we'll take that down and make that a regular bathroom. So we're not increasing the number of rooms, the size of that room upstairs by virtue of putting that new foundation as, where the second floor has a stop and then goes down to a single-story roof there. We're going to extend that and carry it straight up to the second story.
Okay, thank you.
We did, I noticed in your reading from the Health Department, part of that plan was to, the garage, because it's only a summer residence for the Wests, the garage doesn't serve a purpose. So what we wanted to do is put a slider to open up the house. The way it's designed now, there's a beautiful sort of courtyard. It's all fenced in and it's, there's a garden there. And the people who were there were there for about 40 years, so they had a little patio area. So sort of the house lends itself to that little courtyard and patio area. So if you notice in the plan, we're going to put glass along that with sliders going out into that courtyard. Seeing that that garage isn't serving any use, we wanted to do sliders on that garage too with, you know, a sitting area, like a sun porch, so that people could go, not use it as a bedroom or any plumbing or anything like that, but just make it like a barn structure with an exit out to that patio, because it just lends itself to that, as opposed to leaving it as a garage where it's only used in the summer and the Wests don't plan on using it. So I don't know if that, how that plays into what the Board of Health considers useful space.
But that's not reflected on these plans?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I missed that. I thought it was, everything was...
So if you look at the, if you look at the south elevation, you'll see the building to the right that is the garage, and you'll see like a French door on it, on the south I can point that out to any member if they want clarification.
But no bathroom?
No bathroom, no. That's correct.
Next, last one, next to last.
That's the last one I have in my package.
This one, Dave. A2 dot one.
A2 dot two, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. I did, I missed that. Okay, I don't think, it doesn't pose an issue for us. What does the Health Department say? Just can't be used? Well, it's habitable space.
Can't be used for habitable space.
I think you need to go talk to them.
About what they define as habitable space, okay. Yeah, okay, I can take that up with them, but I know that obviously it wouldn't be a bedroom more.
You know, I don't know. It's up to them. You'll have to discuss that aspect of it with them.
Understood.
Ms. Muller, any questions?
No, I think this meets the criteria of the Gale case, and I think I have no questions about it.
Mr. Hederstedt.
I have no questions.
The only question I had, just, and I'm not an engineer, but just looking at the plan here, and I heard your statement that the site coverage is going down, but how exactly, where exactly is it going down?
We're taking out hardscape that's currently there. The new hardscape is less than what is proposed. Not by much. I think it's like half a percent.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal. I see you are cutting out a little bit there, but then you're enclosing part of what looks like it was the drive there. Okay, yeah, I agree, Ms. Muller, meets the Gale case and also the requirements of 325-54A2 as cited by the applicant. Mr. Donahue?
I don't have any questions. The only thing that's going to be is conditions based upon the location of that home. Meaning that the house is on Freeman Street and right in the middle of the area of that town.
Just to give you a little bit about my background, typically my projects consist of this, going to boards in August for an early fall build. And our goals are always met prior to June 1st, before the summer influx. Been doing this for a couple decades, and every project, we've come in and we're out and gone before any of the, I call it the 100-day war begins.
Plus, you've got a paved drive you could use.
Well, not much.
Not much.
It's pretty short, but I think what this gentleman describes is consistent with our usual limitations.
How many contractors at a time would you have on site?
It's all site-dependent, and on that site, you know, we'll have one in at a time. When we get inside, we won't be, we won't be, you know, disturbing the street, or we'll have enough room. I just did a site in Chatham that took an extra six months because we didn't have the access. So I had to give each subcontractor his own time, and we added six months. This isn't a situation like that.
But between July 1st and September 15th of next year, you're out of there?
We're out. We're out before, June 1st is typically our deadline. This is a very standard project for us.
Mr. Armstrong.
No questions, thanks. I have no additional questions.
Okay, we'll have voting. Ms. Muller, I guess me, Mr. ...
Swat.
Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Capoli. Sorry, senior moment. Does anyone in the public want to speak to this case? Okay, I'll entertain a motion in the case. Mr. Donahue.
I make a motion that the President would be issued.
You didn't close the public hearing.
You're right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. Public hearings closed. I'll entertain a motion in this case. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Your sheet there?
All right, we got in case number 2019-13.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, excuse me, I'm dyslexic. Robert West, through his agent, Joseph Hannigan, has applied for special permit to demolish and replace portions of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-54, 325 Table 2, Area Regulation, and Table 325, excuse me, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulation. The motion is to, okay, the property is located at 632 Route 28, MAP 15, Partial P10 in the RL zoning district.
And the motion is to grant this?
We'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
And what did we decide about the parking?
I think the contingencies that we normally put on are going to have to put on.
Right.
So I make a motion that the...
Well, just add a condition.
I'll add a condition that the property, the date of construction cannot be after...
No substantial exterior construction damage or landscaping.
No substantial demolition, construction or new landscaping between, what do we use?
June 30th and September 15th.
And we had Labor Day.
And Labor Day, yeah.
And Labor Day, yeah.
Of 2019 and 2020, if it runs over or gets delayed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion by the board? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hannigan, would you like these plans back? It won't serve you anything.
Stamp all this. Yeah, I'll stamp these in as soon as I get this job.
It's confusing, these, because you can see existing and new construction.
Yeah, the only thing I don't like is this one here.
Good luck.
Yeah, I missed that about the garage. Right. I put it on my own narrative, so.
Apparently it's not an issue for us, just a change of fenestration, as they say.
Yes, they do.
I think that's an excellent use for it. Nice-looking.
No, I think I'm all set with that.
Scraping it. Jesus, we keep pushing this thing around and around, but we never get anywhere. One more time, that's it.
What do your ladies with the pool do? Your two neighbors with the ladies?
What about them? They'll be here this weekend, by the way. You're great.
Is everything fixed? Do they have a big problem or something?
Existing and new construction. It's hard to see.
Not really. They had substantial tree damage.
No, no, I don't care, right, exactly, right. But you couldn't tell what walls were.
Money doesn't seem to be an issue with them, that's for sure. And they're very cautious.
What's going on here?
Oh, I fell.
From?
Landed on rocks.
We talked about this last month, didn't we?
No, we didn't.
This is a new one?
It happened, it happened two days ago.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay. Shayla has brought up a couple of items of new business, should be discussed.
Can I leave that sheet over with you?
Yes, I have two of them here, so this one is yours. You're welcome.
So, a number of points of interest from past cases. The Habitat for Humanity folks just submitted their six building permit applications for the single-family homes over on what is now going to be known as Maury Lane, which is off of Route 28. That was the 40B case.
Yes, by the Chase House, yes.
The West Harwich, what you were asking about.
It is, it starts at 97 Route 28, West Harwich.
Oh, okay.
Going...
One house over.
Yeah.
Is that where the old schoolhouses?
I don't know what was there.
Across from Terry's Airport.
Oh, okay.
Diagonally across there. You know, that beautiful yellow one? It's going to be to the left in the back of that.
Way in the back.
There are two crummy houses there that we had to talk about.
So anyone is welcome, of course, public, but you folks, I thought you might want to know about it, to come in and review them at any time. They're going to go through the whole community development review, all of the departments. What we do in community development is every building permit that comes through goes to planning, conservation, health.
Yep.
Sometimes the engineer, before it gets to building. So they have to make sure that they sign off on it and put in whatever conditions they want before the Building Department can issue. But we have a comprehensive permit, so they don't have any restrictions that they can put on based upon the comprehensive permit. So they're available for anybody to come by and take a look. We also had an article in the Cape Cod Chronicle. I have just a couple of copies here. If anybody didn't see it, it was about the new wastewater treatment plant, which is going to need, like it did for the gas line, places to store equipment and debris from excavation. And if you recall, we had a...
This is the old, the old, the old...
Ori, or sand pit.
Fire station.
The old fire station.
So...
The old fire station three.
So, yes, so the fire station is being now rebuilt. There'll be a section that will be where the old fire station was. So the newspaper article talked about the possibility of storing equipment and some debris at two different locations, one being the fire station and the other being Mr. Paul Cuddy's sand pit at Zero Hall's path, which was the subject of a temporary special permit issued by this board in 2017.
And we had to extend it, didn't we?
Nope.
We did. October 30th this year, I think.
It was October 1st.
October 1st.
It is done on October 1st of 2019. But the other portion of it, as I pointed out to Mr. Ryer, is that it had very specific requirements. There was a letter that came from the engineer, construction engineer, R. H. White, and we incorporated that into the decision. And this detailed exactly what could be stored there, and it was all materials and equipment for the gas line. So in order to store equipment for the wastewater treatment program going on, he would need a new special permit. So the Commissioner went to talk today to the town administrator about saying that he was going to remind Mr. Cuddy of that. I think it just sort of got forgotten by people. But we also talked about, Mr. Ryer and I, and the Commissioner and I, if you recall, the pump stations, that whole process for the four pump stations included an argument by the town attorney that because they were for essential services, that was why they required special permits. The wastewater treatment facility and all of the, you know, all of the attending piping and houses and all of that is a part of what they're considering essential services. So if they're going to store for that project, there's an argument to be made, whether you want to discuss it, as to whether or not the fire station would also need a special permit for storing materials, equipment, whatever. So that's something for discussion.
So we have Essential Services Project 1, and now we have Essential Services Project 2?
No, this is the same Essential Services Project that requires a special permit for the pump houses. Same project.
Well, you're right in the sense, Project 1 was the gas line.
Right.
This is the sewer line.
This is, right.
So, yes, it's a separate essential service.
But we didn't even go over Essential Services with the sand pit. We never brought it up. It was never mentioned.
No, that came up just in connection with the pump stations.
Right, right.
There were complaints we had received on that, too.
Right, and that was just a question of a use permit. He got a special permit for change of use, a temporary change of use.
Well, we also had to give them a variance, too, though.
I don't know. We, I don't have...
We gave them both a special permit and a variance. Special permit for the use and a variance on the dimensions.
When would this have been, Dave?
I'm sorry?
We only gave them a special permit. I have the decision.
The pump stations?
No, 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 I'm talking about the sand pit.
Oh, okay, I'm talking about the pump stations. That's where it came up, Essential Services, not on the sand pit.
That's right.
The pump stations, we had to give them the special permit for use and the variance for the building location.
Right, so if the firehouse is going to be used...
Yeah, I guess to be consistent, we probably would consider it an essential service and have a permit for a special permit.
I think, yeah, err on the side of conservatism and have them go through it again.
It appears that there's time.
I'd argue it's a municipal use and permitted of, right. I forget now why town council...
She read the definitions, and I haven't since this morning. But she said it clearly fits with the essential services. And they could have gone with the municipal services for the pump houses and gotten away easy, but they did not. So the town attorney is calling...
Essential.
Yeah, I just believe to be consistent.
I can understand. Takes away any ifs, ands, and buts.
Well, Essential Services actually calls out gas and electric distribution in the definition, so that was pretty clear. This one. Oh, yeah, and sewerage systems. Yeah, so it is an essential service, okay, so they do, they do have to come in under the definition.
Also, it would prevent, if there are neighbors in that area, and there have been neighbors in that area, that have complained about the use on Austin Drive, remember we had to do a temporary special permit on Austin Drive for parking of vehicles because neighbors were complaining? So I think having a special permit would be a better way to review everything so that the neighbors would know that it's not just happening.
Yeah, I agree. And at least according to the article, they only want to put the pipes, those big pipes, on the fire station site, which I assume is going to be, it's going to be knocked down. They didn't say that in the article? They're going to level it?
I think it does say that.
Yeah, it's got to be leveled, the old station.
The old station. They're not going to use the structure anymore.
No, they're not. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be torn down.
Says, "Our company will also use the old fire station location once the structure is removed for storage of equipment and materials."
Okay.
Excuse me, but they're going to use both locations at this point?
It appears, it appears that that is the...
Probably the sand pit will do what they did with the gas line and put the debris, the blacktop, you know, all of that stuff.
Says it was a good winner. The contractor has pushed to get the job completed by mid to late September. The old station can be taken down at that point. So it's imminent.
And before the case is heard, if you could circulate the material from the initial Cuddy special permit, because we'll want to put the same restrictions on the asphalt storage that we had in there. Because that was an issue, remember the...
Yes, yes, what they were taking there, they said people, stuff was being trucked in from somewhere else and processed.
Right, the two companies, one was Brown, the other was...
Right.
So it was good that there was a letter that was incorporated into the decision that had the very detailed description.
Right, and that's why...
And I think that, what will probably happen is I'll bring this back to the Commissioner and ask him to go forward with this to the administrator. What I'm hoping is that we don't have a last minute, it all has to get into the meeting on, on next Wednesday, which is kind of what happened last time, and I was overwhelmed with, how do I get this in?
If they're wanting to use the old fire station for storage and they're planning to take the fire station down in September, are we facing rush?
Well, supposedly they're starting work in August, but I don't know.
Well, it says in Article 2, and I think it was the administrator who said this, that Robert Howard has a facility on Great Western Road and that they would start by using that location, but he said time is money and it would be nice if they could have someplace closer as well. So it's not essential that they be closed, but I think that it should be brought to their attention that if they want to start a process, they should... their attention that if they want to start a process, they should start the process, not two weeks before we have a meeting.
Right.
Right.
Which always brings up a funny issue. I heard that the state agrees and is supporting a multi-town sewer.
Yes.
What is it?
It would be Harwich? Harwich, Yarmouth.
Yarmouth and Dennis.
Dennis.
Now, isn't that weird that we've got something separate on East Harwich and now we got a conglomerate going on the rest of Harwich, isn't that what's going to happen?
Well, East Harwich, the sewage is going to Chatham.
Right, I understand that, but you, but it's a separate contract, it's not with the state, the state hasn't agreed to it or anything else.
They didn't have to.
I guess they didn't, but the state is now pushing Harwich in the other direction, the rest of Harwich in a different direction.
But it makes sense.
I think that was going to get go.
Yeah.
It must make sense.
Makes sense. Down in New Jersey, there was no town that did it by themselves. Every pumping station or treatment station had three to five towns on it.
Right.
And they allocated the cost, both the initial cost and the maintenance cost on a throughput basis. So with five towns, they had twenty percent each, they paid twenty percent of the ticket, and it was the most efficient way to do it. And each town was responsible for all the infrastructure in that town.
It's going to be interesting, and what's, what pieces of the towns are going to be included in that.
Well, they've got, it's all in the phases. If you get the book, it's got, it's all mapped out there.
Is it?
Yeah. It's, I forget how many, if it's five or seven phases, forty or forty-three year project. In some towns, some parts will never be sewered.
Really?
Well, under the plan, I don't believe that's reality, I think eventually every house in town will be sewered.
But not in our lifetime.
Not in our lifetime, no.
Well, speak for yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
I'm going into trial, Jen.
If you go onto the town website, they have a whole website, subsite on wastewater being...
Is this that little multicolored pamphlet?
Well, there's pamphlets even on the way out tonight, they'll make you one over here. They've got pamphlets, there's all kinds of info on that as well.
Information on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank God.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of the July twenty-first, two thousand nineteen meeting, I gave one small correction, I guess, or comment to Shayla, comment to Shayla that she'll incorporate, and it simply said on one of the cases when we discussed it, just to add that the case meant the Gale case and the bylaw. Did anybody else have any, did you have a comment that was submitted?
Yeah, I sent the comments in.
Before I, before I then sent it.
You recirculated it, right.
I haven't heard anything back, so I assume it's okay.
Anybody else have anything on the minutes?
On the minutes, I have a question, something else.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Mr. Donahue. The question I have is the accessory apartments and the Airbnbs. If anybody knows, what's being put in place to monitor the Airbnbs? Here in Harwich? Yes.
I don't, the way, yeah, I don't think there is anything currently, but I do, I do understand that they're starting to, the state is starting to look at it, and the town is starting to look at permitting, but... As soon as they figure out how much money they can make off taxes, then they'll go into full effect.
Well, that's what I was going to say, there has been that tax piece of it, and I don't know the complete implementation structure of that, but there's been a tax piece as to if you rent your home, you don't live there, but there is a tax piece associated with that, and I don't know, you'd have to check with the tax office and see what that's about, but it has inspired a three hundred and fifty percent increase in people signing up for, in the building department, what we call rental density registration. So people are registering their homes, we had quite a few come in this year, but given that the first year I was here, they were only fourteen.
Maybe, maybe somebody, maybe somebody can help me...
So what does that, what does that mean, then? Is that a transient use, considered a transient use for that?
No, it's considered a short-term rental.
Really?
Anything ninety days or less, and we don't do anything in the town for year-round rentals.
But if it's a daily rental, for example, that's a, why is that different than...
Anything ninety days or less.
And what do they have to do, register?
They register, no.
Ninety days or less?
Yep, so if you...
Including on a one-night stay?
Yes, that's...
Yep, so if you, of the course of your, I don't know, I mean, I haven't, I've had people call and I never quite know how to answer, what if I have one day a month?
Right.
You know, for twelve months.
But in a motel, that's a, that's a transient use, right? So that's what I get confused.
And I don't know how they're interpreting it in the tax office.
So heretofore, if you rented a house, you didn't have to rent your whole...
You were supposed to, but as I noted, the first year I was here, five years ago, there were fourteen people.
Nobody did it. Okay, now Airbnb originally was, you rented a room in somebody else's house and they were there, but now Airbnb has gotten to be like VRBO and...
Yeah, it's anything you want, you can rent a room, you can rent the whole house, it's very...
Open.
Yes, it's caused a lot of concern in major cities, for example Dublin in Ireland, it's, there's a real housing shortage, and so they've enacted very strict laws, and they're actually going out with enforcement agents to follow up on it.
I think Seattle's going through that same thing.
What Harwich has done was just to make it easier to get an accessory apartment without having to go to different boards for a special permit, you can get an accessory apartment with a variety of conditions in order to inspire people to offer, and it has to be a year-round.
Right.
Yes, well, that's, that's for housing, I, that's a separate, in my mind, but I think that what you're pointing out, a lot of the boards are trying to catch up with the concept of... You know, Pete Towns working on the issue.
Well, because there are towns where whole buildings have been turned into Airbnb, investors bought a buildings in cities, and the whole building is Airbnb and it destabilizes the neighborhood.
Well, and there's a safety issue, too.
Right.
If the, if motels or hotels are subjected to certain safety codes and...
Right.
You can make the argument that they would, should be, too.
As a property owner, you can make more money on Airbnb than you can by renting.
My son was renting his condo in Boston, the lower level, it's an Airbnb, and the condo board put a stop to it, and like they would come to visit us for Thanksgiving, and he said they rented it for the weekend, the whole place, and it paid their mortgage for the month, and I was in favor of what the board did in stopping them. You don't want a lot of strangers in a rental building running through.
I'm just really asking that question, this is going to...
It's an excellent question.
This is going to be coming, and I know there's people out there right now that have the apartment in the...
Thank you, Dave.
And certainly there are people that are making some decent money, and I don't begrudge them that at all, but...
Not at all, no.
But it's a requirement, ninety days? What?
Anything ninety days or less is considered a, a short-term, I don't think the town of Harwich has differentiated between a short-term and nightly...
An Airbnb, yeah. We have to go there, and it will probably, like you pointed out, it has to be brought up at town meetings, you know, put on as warrants, you have to come to some board selectman meeting and bring it up, I don't quite know how.
Well, we're not, we're not alone in this, I mean, this is, as you pointed out, is worldwide, really, so...
Right, yes.
Just one other note, I was going down Route twenty-eight today to look at the house on this Route twenty-eight case, and they knocked down part of the old Stone Horse, and they've got a big foundation, and if you haven't been down there, to start the migrant housing or...
Dormitory housing.
That's dormitory housing.
Yeah, we gave them the use, change of use to dormitory use.
Which is, is there a limitation on the amount?
Yeah, I think that they, they had to go from here to the planning board, so I'd have to read the planning board decision, because we didn't have, in this board, we couldn't give them specific limitations on tiny, but the owner did say it was going to be more.
I think there was some change in the dimensions of the rooms or something at one point.
I think you could go online to the town government website and read the planning board minutes and...
It's like a hundred and ninety-something, wasn't it? It's over a hundred, yeah.
But they have to have a house manager on site, too.
They do, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, any other business? I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.